Councilmember Remi, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have the honor of having Pastor Benjamin Asay Frimprong from the Power of Anointing Ministries here with us tonight to lead us in prayer. Pastor, welcome to council, sir.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Father, in the name of Jesus, we give you glory. Bible declares we should pray for many in authority; therefore, we pray for every one of us here. It is written in James, chapter number one, verse five, that if we need wisdom, we should ask of you. It is time to discuss our city, discuss things that pertain to our city. We need the grace and the understanding, insight, and knowledge to discuss our city, to build our city, like Nehemiah helped to build the city. We pray that O God help us and grant that wisdom, in the precious name of Jesus, as we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akhaur, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akhaur, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here are no additions or corrections. The journal is approved. This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed in the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, clerk. First, we will move to resolutions and announcements by council members. Councilmember Bangston?
Thank you, President Pro Tim. Just one announcement today, the special day for me today, Xavier Bangston turns three years old. So I am wishing him a happy birthday, although he's probably not watching. But happy birthday, Xavier, and daddy loves you. And that's all I have.
A happy birthday to a no longer little baby, Xavier. Yeah. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Preschooler. Good evening, Pro Tim. I do have a couple of announcements. First and foremost, as folks know, this Wednesday is Red, White, and Boom. And we just want to give folks a couple of different reminders for this weekend, or for this week. Downtown will be having road closures. You can find those road closures on the Department of Public Service website, on wnci.ihart or .ihart.com. You can also find it on the Red, White, and Boom website. We're also encouraging folks to take alternate modes of transportation to get downtown, so folks can scooter, although there will be, as you get closer to where all the action is happening downtown, there is a zone where you will no longer be able to scoot any closer, but you can certainly scoot closer to downtown. You can also reserve your parking. You can do that on the Red, White, and Boom website. And then, obviously, you could ride a COGO bike from the city of Columbus, and you could also ride a COTA to get to downtown. So Director, are there any other suggestions or things that we want to put on folks' radars as they head down for the boom?
Pro Tim Dorans, Chair, and other members of council, good evening. I would direct folks to the Park Columbus mobile app to identify where there is parking and potentially reserve parking if you must drive downtown.
Awesome. So we just asked that folks, if you're coming down to Red, White, and Boom, please just again consider being patient if you are decide, if you do decide to drive, but please take alternate modes of transportation. We wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday. I also want to invite folks to join myself and Councilmember Weich. We'll be hosting a community meeting on the South Side that is in District Eight at 6:00 PM at New Beginnings Christian Church. You can follow both of our social media sites for more information, but we hope that residents will come out and have a conversation with us about some of the things that are top of mind for them in District Eight and on the South Side. So, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember De Akhaur.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Dorans. Just a few announcements and one resolution. As a reminder, applications to be a part of the 2024-2025 Columbus Youth Council Cohort are now open. Students can apply at columbus.gov/cyc. The application deadline is Friday, July 12, and recommendation letters are due by Friday, July 19. I strongly encourage you to share this program with any rising junior or senior, excuse me. Last December, more than 840 residents at Colonial Village were told by property management that they will be required to vacate the premises by December 31 due to inhabitable conditions. To prevent those residents from becoming unhoused, the city stepped up to ensure these families had places to stay while they worked to get rehoused. The original plan for the city was to provide temporary housing through March, but the program has been extended three times. Tonight, we have one final piece of legislation on consent, $700,000 to the Community Shelter Board to continue to support the residents of Colonial Village. Once this final piece of legislation passes tonight, the city will have spent $6 million on the former residents' temporary housing expenses. I'm incredibly proud of the work of the city, and in particular, the Department of Development, what they have done to support the residents of Colonial Village in this unprecedented situation. To date, 393 households have transitioned out of hotels. Deputy Director Harris is with us tonight, representing the Department of Development. Deputy Director, can you please provide us with an update on Colonial Village?
Thank you, Chair Favors, Pro Tim Dorans, members of council. As you mentioned, the original commitment from the city was to provide temporary housing options through the winter months from November, when the original inspections were completed, through the end of March. Since March, the city has provided the three extensions to allow families additional time to access services, work with partners, and identify housing options. While the city has exceeded its initial commitment, we cannot maintain the level of support indefinitely. And the legislation before council this evening reflects our final payment covering the month of June. The Community Shelter Board has become, began the process of exiting the remaining households. CSB is working closely with the families to identify and secure housing to avoid overwhelming the system. Single adults were exited this past weekend, with families exiting starting on July 5. As of today, 125 families will remain at hotels beyond the original exit date, as they have been approved for housing but are unable to move yet. For households who are not able to identify an alternate housing option, CSB is currently working with shelters, shelter providers to increase capacity to the traditional system. Recognizing that these households face a large number of barriers, the city continues to work closely with partner agencies to assist as many families as possible in order to give them the best opportunity for success in our community. Even after the initial deadlines, we will continue to work closely with CSB and our resettlement partners to address these needs.
Thank you, Deputy Director. And just to clarify, it was a little hard to hear you, but as of Sunday evening, were there 142 households remaining in hotels that are still waiting to find permanent homes? And I know you were going into just a little bit of detail what the plan was for them. If you could just elaborate just a little bit.
So it is 125 families.
Thank you for that correction.
Yes. And so those individuals are in the process of either securing or have secured vouchers, but actually are waiting for other components of their relocation to occur before we actually move them.
Thank you very much. A little off here, but I know that this council has been highly invested in the success of this endeavor with Colonial Village. And so if my colleagues have any remarks at this time, but I just want to take this moment to applaud the Department of Development for this work. This is an unprecedented situation that we have had to navigate, but you all have done it very well, and you have made sure that our residents were treated with dignity and respect. So thank you for that. And that leads me to the last announcement. The Housing, Homeless, and Building Committee will be hosting two hearings focused on the vacancy and foreclosure registries, two of the remaining initiatives from council's Housing for All policy package, which was announced last March, as well as the proposed relocation code change in partnership with the Department of Development, which would have been applicable for the Colonial Village, as well as for the Latitude 525 abatement that occurred not too long ago. Additionally, we will take this time to provide updates on the remaining initiatives from the package, which includes wholesaler regulation, rental registry, ADU pilot, and rent increase notification. The first hearing is a virtual hearing tomorrow at 12:30 PM. You can watch this on the city's YouTube and Facebook pages. The second hearing will be an in-person hearing next Wednesday, July 10, at 5:00 PM in council chambers, to provide written or to sign up to provide three-minute testimonies. During the hearing, please email my legislative analyst, excuse me, Kendra, which is K-N-A-S-I-E-D-U at columbus.gov with the subject line "July 10 Hearing Testimony" with your name and address by noon on July 10. If you would like to see the text of the legislation, you can go to columbus.gov and go to city council's page, where you will see the meeting agenda and can download the legislation. Alternatively, alternatively, you can email my legislative aide at s-n-j-i-n-d-a-l@columbus.gov. And last, but certainly not least, we have Resolution 0180X-2024 to designate July 9, 2024, as Black Women's Equal Pay Day in the city of Columbus and recognize the work of Black Girl Rising. At this time, I would invite President Fran Frazier, as well as the Black Girl Rising Group, to come forward. In 2024, it is estimated that, on average, the Black woman makes 69 cents for every dollar earned by white men. The discrepancy in pay can cost Black women up to upwards of $900,000 in lost earnings over the course of a 40-year career. Despite Black women's educational gains, continued structural barriers such as sexism, racism, and lack of occupational support led to some Black women experiencing pay inequity. In 2022, single Black women have the lowest median wealth at 2 cents to the dollar when compared to all single men in central Ohio. The mission of Black Girl Rising Incorporated is to place all Black girls at promise by serving as a catalyst for change that improves outcomes for African-American girls and their families. Black Girl Rising Incorporated engages Black girls in diverse capacities to reach their full potential through research, advocacy, and career opportunities. We applaud Black Girl Rising Incorporated for sending four of their graduating seniors to New York to present papers on equity and leadership issues affecting the quality of life for Black girls at the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. And we congratulate Ms. Tanaya Taylor, whose paper was referenced by the United Nations' Secretary General Antonio Guterres in his speech. With that, it is my honor to turn the podium over to President Fran Frazier.
Good evening, President Pro Tim Dorans, Councilmember Favor, and honorable council members. Our deep gratitude for this momentous occasion. Black Girl Rising seeks to help Black girls become resilient in spite of the trauma, the racism, and the sexism that they experience, so that they can become stronger and believe in their own inner power, supported in the company of caring adults. Our goal is to empower girls to successfully meet life's challenges with a sense of self-determination, confidence to handle what comes before them, hope in the future, and a feeling of well-being. We are very concerned about the mental and emotional health of Black girls, because this is our work. In 2015, we established the first Black Girl Rising think tank. This is a research-based program designed as a safe space for girls to critically analyze and dialogue about the quality of life of Black girls in this city, issues that affect Black girls in their homes, their communities, and in schools. Specifically, the think tank girls give voice to their concerns by developing critical thinking skills, learning to communicate across barriers, building community with each other across class, family, relationships, backgrounds, and experiences. However, we thought it best that this evening, you hear for just a little from one of our amazing Black Girl Think Tank members instead of me.
Good evening, President Pro Tim Dorans, Councilmember Favor, and esteemed council members. My name is Tanaya Taylor. I am a beginning sophomore at the Ohio State University, OH. I have been a member of Black Girl Rising and a member of our think tank for six years now. On behalf of Black Girl Rising and the members of our Black Girl Think Tank, we thank you on this behalf of this wonderful recognition of our work to place all Black girls at promise and to recognize Black Women Equal Pay Day. In March of this year, my think tank sisters and I attended the 68th Annual United Nations Commission on the Status of Women in New York. To say that I was inspired, excited, happy to attend CSW and to meet all of the amazing people that I did from around the world is beyond an understatement. Because for the first time in my life, I was around people literally from every space and walk of life who were all there for the same passion and reason as I was, forwarding humanity through advocating for the rights of the girl. If you help the girl, you help her community. If you help the community, then you help the city. If you help the city, then you help the state. And if you can help the state, then you can help the nation. And if you can help the nation, you can help the world. All of this is rooted in the support of the girl. No Black girl wants to work hard, graduate from high school, college, or graduate school, and find out that she's being paid less than her male or female coworkers because of her gender or race. James Baldwin once said, "The paradox of education is precisely this, that as one begins to become conscious, one begins to examine the society in which they're being educated." President Dorans, Councilmember Favor, and members of city council, thank you for sounding the alarm and raising awareness on Black Women Equal Pay Day, especially for all Black girls. Through this, we are sure that change will occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and congratulations to you. What a prestigious honor to all four of you for being able to have the ability to travel to DC and to also to be recognized at such a prestigious level. So congratulations to all of you. But I am going to turn the podium over to my partner and good, because I know that she's got some comments for you all, because she's done some amazing work on behalf of all women in the city of Columbus to ensure that we are working to address the pay gap in Columbus. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Councilwoman Favor, and thank you all for your work. You know, it is, it is our job to make the world a better place for the next generation, and I feel like the kids are right. We are leaving it in good hands, but I will tell you that when I was your age, I wouldn't have known what the pay gap was. I wouldn't have known how to advocate for myself, and certainly not to have, how to advocate for other women and girls. And so this is incredibly important, because you have the full support of this council as it pertains to investment in women. And you said it, an investment in women and an investment in girls is an investment in community. It just makes everything better, because we make things better, and we deserve to be recognized for the gifts that we have and to be paid equally for the work that we do, full stop, no matter what your background is, no matter what your gender is. And so we have started to lay the foundation, but I feel so incredibly good about the baton that we will pass to this next generation, because if you are doing this work now, then pay equal pay can be a reality within our lifetime. It has to be. And so I just want to thank you for your bravery. I want to thank you for your courage. I want to thank you for your advocacy, because it is incredibly important. And so this is the mantle, this is the work that we have to lay before us, and so the earlier we get started, the better. So again, thank you, congratulations for all of the amazing work that you do. Thank you to my good friend and one of the mentors, and certainly someone who I look up to as an inspiration, Fran Frazier, for your vision for engaging and giving girls and women a platform. So, thank you, Councilmember.
Absolutely. Do any of my other colleagues have any comments for our young ladies? And I would echo you, Councilmember, to President Frazier, thank you for continuing to do the work in our community. The work is never done, and you are a shining example of what that looks like, to continue to, to give back, to make sure that you don't, that there continue to be first in our community, that you're leaving a legacy that will pay forward. So thank you for the work that you continue to do for all of our young women. Ladies, once again, congratulations. And with that, I'd move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akhaur, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted.
Come on back.
And if everyone could please give a round of applause to these young women. That is all for me, President Pro Tim.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remi.
Thank you very much, President Pro Tim. Dorans, if I could ask the folks from Northland to come up, Mike Trulyn and company, as I present this resolution to the Northland Community Council, it's Resolution 179X-2024. So as a former leader and president of the Northland Community Council, I thought it was appropriate to, to invite them up for the 60th running of the Northland Community Council. Running this, yeah. No one's running this thing. It's, it's actually one of the longest in the city, 1.7 miles. But anyway, it's something that all of us on this dais are very familiar with, and certainly one where we wanted to recognize the hard work and dedication. It's, as somebody that helped do this for many, many, many years, and in fact, in 2018, my team almost did it exclusively, because we didn't have such a robust group of people to do it, but I'm very proud of the people that are doing this work today. It's an exciting time. It is stepping off at 10:00 AM on July 4 at Carl in Morse, but it's my honor to recognize you. So at this time, I'd like to recognize and honor the Northland Community Council in celebration of its 60th Northland Community Council Fourth of July parade, not consecutively because of something called COVID, but certainly thank you for your hard work and dedication. We look forward to it every year. And so I'll turn the mic over to you, Mike, and go ahead and you guys speak.
Thank you. I didn't know I would be making a speech.
You don't have to. Introduce, introduce the crowd.
Can we just introduce ourselves?
Sure, absolutely.
DJ?
Christine, or, you know, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Andre D.J. Dre Lofton. I've been participating in this parade for, what, four years now? I'm a member of the Northland community, and I'm proud to live in Northland.
My name is Christine Ostrer. I'm the current president of Devonshire Civic. This is my sixth consecutive year working the parade.
My name is Mike Trulyn. I am a co-chair on the parade, the KWPCA president, and NCC's presidential award recipient.
Good evening. I'm Diane Agnes. I'm the very proud area superintendent for Region Five. Our schools for Region Five lie within the Northland area.
Good evening. Gallo Fragga from Frag Graphic Solutions, we're part, one of the partners in the parade.
My name is Joshua Momo, and I am a writer who lives in Columbus, and I'm here today because I am part of the Northland Parade for the Fourth of July.
My name is Justine Boyd, and I will be singing the National Anthem in the Fourth of July Parade.
So would anybody like to talk a little bit more about the theme this year, and certainly any other details?
So this year is our 60th anniversary of the Northland Fourth of July Parade. Being the 60th year, anniversary gifts are diamonds. So we are the diamonds of Northland's shining bright this Fourth of July. We had a strong goal of hitting 60 different countries to represent the melting pot of Columbus, and I think we've officially hit it, which is great. We have some great sponsorships. The flag ladies actually donated different, 60 different cultural flags to us, as long as American flags. We have over 50 registered participants for the parade. We have actual grand marshal, which is great, and also a junior grand marshal changing the mold this year. We also have some singers at the beginning. We have DJ at the YMCA announcing everybody else throughout. So 10:00 AM start, bright and early. And one more we'd like to recognize.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Engman, and I'm president of the Ghana Council, and we partner, we've been partnering a couple of years with Northland Community Council for the July Fourth Parade. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I know, I think Councilmember De Akhaur is going to join me in the parade this year, and certainly praying for no rain and cool, cool warning, but certainly as the only traditional Fourth of July parade in the city of Columbus, we are very excited to celebrate this year. So with that, I move for, well, actually, let me ask, does any, do any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Congratulations. Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akhaur, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted.
Let's see here. Just a reminder, it is an exciting week with a lot of outdoor activities. We want to make sure that everybody has fun, but to stay safe. Remember that airborne fireworks are technically illegal without permits within the city of Columbus. Basically, anything that explodes or shoots in the air is illegal in this city. Please leave the fireworks to the professionals, go down and see Red, White, and Boom. But also remember, do not shoot the guns in the air. It's extremely dangerous and illegal. What goes up must come down, and stray bullets can cause serious injuries, property damage, or even fatalities. Instead of using firearms, celebrate safely with noise makers, music, or light shows. Let's keep our community safe and sure that everyone has a very safe Fourth of July. I also want to wish Nancy Solly, one of our team, who is out on surgical leave right now, a very happy birthday. And then finally, my aide got, finally got, and she'd say finally, I think, engaged this last weekend, so I do want to congratulate, congratulate Avery Townsend and congratulate Griffin for a very well-done proposal at the Franklin Park Conservatory. I know that she's very excited, and we look forward to hearing more about the plan. So with that, that ends my announcements. Thank you.
Certainly sound like someone's dad, Councilmember Remi.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Remi. Councilmember Weich? Nothing from you. Well, I do have one announcement before we move to legislation this evening. So last week, we announced that we were reopening Columbus City Council's Changing Station Accessibility Grant. If folks remember from last year, the Dads Caucus on City Council partnered together to work towards getting, I think we got close to 200 different baby changing stations out in our community across the city. And we saw a robust interest, and as we've talked many times at this, on this stage, about the importance of shared parenting between both moms and dads, and moms and moms and dads and dads, to make sure that they're able to take care of their little ones when they're out experiencing all of Columbus. And all too often, it's difficult to find a place to take care of them when they need it, when they're in diapers. And this is our small way of making Columbus more family-friendly. So the application window for this round will be from June 24 through August 24, and folks can get access to that application at columbus.gov/changingstation. We're hoping to hopefully double the amount of changing stations that we got out last year, so we're very excited, again, to continue to work to make Columbus very excited, again, to continue to work to make Columbus a more family-friendly city. And with that, are there any comments from any of our elected officials, city attorney, auditor, treasurer? Thank you very much. And with that, we will move towards, now may we have a motion to waive second reading, entitled 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Oh, actually, before that, are there any requests from members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, maybe now have a motion to waive second reading of the title of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you. Now, will the clerk please read in the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation, tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 1820 and 1830-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 1765 and 1816-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1724, 1729, 1846, and 1848-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 1367-2024. Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee ordinance 1664-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance is 1669, 1761, 1788-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 1574, 1695, 1784, 1969-2024. Rules and Policy Committee ordinance is 1995, 1997, and 1987-2024.
Thank you, clerk. We now read the ordinance numbers, I'm sorry, the following. Ordinance appear on our agenda's consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 178X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 1591, 1601, 1624, 1754, 1775, 1776, and 1850-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is 1540 and 1807-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 163X-2024, and ordinances 1207, 1590, 1598, 1614, 1629, 1630, 1653, 1747-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1368, 1628, 1680, 1681, and 1772-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee ordinance is 1254 and 1663-2024. Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee ordinance is 1466, 1564, 1594, 1719, 1804-2024. Health, Human Services and Equity Committee ordinance is 1631, 1670, 1720, 1722, 1787-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance is 1491, 19, or excuse me, 1694, 1743, 1753, 1759-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 1463, 1493, 1602, 1640, 1644, 1646, 1647, 1762, 1764, and 1798-2024.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. We have Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins in the Housing Committee speaking to ordinance 1564-2024. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612, I'm in support of this, but I want to know, homes only here, how long this has been in operation? Then I will be questioned for $489 million for the next 10 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. We'll have the Department of Development follow up with you regarding the time of that program's existence. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. We will now move to the second reading of 30-day legislation postponed in emergency legislation. First committee to come for council is the Finance and Governance Committee. Councilmember Bangston chairs that committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Dorans. First up tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee for a second reading, we have Resolution 10, sorry, 0170X-2024, to adopt the 2025 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. The county tax budget is a state-mandated process that we and our city auditor follow to receive our city's portion of local government funds. As in years past, during the second reading of this piece of legislation, tonight, council will conduct a public hearing. With us, with us this evening, we have Vicki Vincent, the Director of Finance Analytics for the Auditor's Office, who will present on this budget. Vicki, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Dorans, members of council. The auditor asks for your approval of the 2025 tax budget. As mentioned, this is a process required by the Ohio Revised Code, where the city must prepare and adopt a resolution setting forth the city's estimate of resources for the next year. Upon your approval, the 2025 tax budget will be submitted to the county budget commissions before the required date of July 20th. Once the tax budget is accepted by the counties, we'll request that council pass another resolution to accept the amounts and rates set by the county budget commissions based upon our 2025 tax budget.
I should probably turn my microphone on. Can you just talk about the methodology of how we come up with this and the number that we submit for our tax budget?
Certainly. We use the same methodology we use for operating revenue estimates, based on information we collect from the counties, from the states, trending we use over the past several years. And we have yet to have an issue. They've accepted our submission each year, to my knowledge.
Thank you for that. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, thank you. This is a pretty routine piece of legislation for us. At this time, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 0177X-2024, to accept, to accept the capital improvement program 2024 through 2029, as described herein as the primary guide for future capital improvements budgets ordinances, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents the city's annual capital improvements program request. The capital improvements program is the city's six-year capital improvement plan for all departments for the period 2024 through 2029. It outlines current year 2024 and future years 2025 through 2029, anticipated investments in capital infrastructure projects. Tonight, I will be referring this resolution and ordinance 1907-2024 back to committee, so that council can hold public hearings on this year's budget prior to passage. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, at this time, I move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance is referred to committee.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1738-2024, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Office of Construction Management to enter into a professional services agreement with Heapy Engineering to provide architect of record services for the Facilities Management Division Warehouse Project, to authorize an expenditure up to $1,500,000 within the Construction Management Capital Improvements Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a construction design contract for future renovations at the former Toys R Us building located on the far east side on Groves Road. This property located at 4285 Groves Road was acquired by the city and will be renovated to relocate the city's facility management division. This building will be primarily used by the maintenance and custodial staff for operations. The design services will include the following: office space, warehouse space, material storage space, restrooms, break rooms, technology, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire, alarm, fire suppression, roofing, parking, and security. Heapy Engineering will use two women-owned subcontractors for the project, which will meet the Office of Diversity and Inclusion's 20% minority goal for the project. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. And lastly, we have ordinance 1907-2024, to adopt a capital improvement budget for the 12 months ending December 31st, 2024, or until such a time as a new capital improvement budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for capital improvements requiring legislative authorization in 2024, to repeal ordinance number 1711-2023, as amended and to declare an emergency. As previously mentioned, this ordinance represents the city's annual capital improvement budget request. The 2024 capital improvements budget request represents the first year of the city's capital improvement program, subject to Resolution 0177X-2024, which I just read earlier. This year's capital budget request amounts to $1.99 billion and outlines current year anticipated investments in city capital infrastructure projects. Over the next two weeks, council will be, will hold three hearings to discuss the details of the budget with the community. The first hearing will take place virtually tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. and will be streamed via the city's YouTube page and council's Facebook page. If you're interested in speaking on the budget during tomorrow's hearing, please send an email to Jonathan Brown in my office at JBBrown@Columbus.gov by 12:00 p.m. tomorrow. We will also make sure that we are looking at the live feed as well and make sure that we take folks' questions as they come in. The second hearing will take place next Monday at 6:00 p.m. at the Linden Community Center located at 1350 Briarwood Avenue. And the third hearing will take place at the Columbus Fire Training Academy located at 3639 Parsons Avenue. If you would like to speak at either of these hearings or submit written testimony, please email Jonathan Brown in my office. Again, that's JBBrown@Columbus.gov. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I will move, I'll move for passage. But before that, I wanted to thank the administration for preparing this budget and getting it over to us. Also, I want to thank our community engagement team here at council for putting together robust bus tours. We had a chance to take some bus tours and go around in different sides of the city with our area commissioners to really look and touch and feel what they are submitting to us. And lastly, I want to thank all of our area commissioners who submitted project requests to us earlier this year for council to review and to look at. And I want to thank my colleagues in advance for the amendments and the robust discussion that we will have around this capital budget. This capital budget and the amount shows the robust health of our city, but more important, shows the resilience of our city. It shows that we are continuing to make in critical investments in quality of life infrastructure for all our residents in every single neighborhood. So, again, thank you all, and look forward to engaging with you over this month, and looking forward to passage of the capital budget. With that, I move for passage on this ordinance 1907-2024.
But, council member.
I apologize. I moved way too quickly. We were going to have a conversation before we passed the budget. At this point, I refer to committee ordinance 1907-2024.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akkauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Refer to committee.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Dorans. That's all I have in my committee's seat.
Thank you, Councilmember Bangston. The next committee to come for council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. I have one item today, one ordinance today in Public Service and Transportation, ordinance 1660-2024, to authorize the transfer of funds between the Wagoneer MI TIF Fund and Wagoneer MI TIFT Capital Fund, and between the East Broad Dominion TIF Fund and the East Broad Dominion Capital Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the East Broad Street Growth Area Pay As We Grow Fund, and within the Reynoldsburg Columbus Pay As We Grow Fund, to transfer cash and appropriation between the various funds, to appropriate funds within the various funds, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Arterial Street Rehabilitation East Broad Street Widening Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $25,519,446.63 from various funds for the project, and to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the period, and to declare an emergency. This project will support the expansion of East Broad Street from east of I-270 to west of Bryce by one mile, Taylor Station Road from East Broad Street to the entrance of Mount Carmel Medical Park by .2 miles, and McNaughton Road from East Broad Street to Gantz Lane by .19 miles. This project includes the addition of a shared use path along East Broad Street, Taylor Station Road, and McNaughton Road. The project consists of additions and improvements to sidewalks, lighting, stormwater drainage systems, signal and interconnect systems, retaining walls, and other work as may be necessary. The improvements will also be made at the intersections along East Broad Street, Taylor Station Road, McNaughton, Blossom Field Boulevard, Outer Belt Street, and Chris Perry Lane. The estimated notice-to proceed date is July 19th, 2024. Director, I want to, this is a very large project, and if you could give us a little bit more. So, we talked about the shared use path. We talked about some of the traffic improvements, but if you could tell us a little bit more about the project, please.
Good evening again, Pro Tim Dorans, Chair, members of council. Yeah, this one's a big one. This is a much-needed safety improvement out on East Broad Street in a very fast-growing part of Columbus that's seen extensive growth in the previous, you know, probably 10 years. Currently today, 65,000 cars per day on this road. The congestion is real, and this project is going to expand East Broad Street, but it's also going to create more mobility options by adding the shared use path, the sidewalk improvements, better, better access to transit along East Broad Street. I think that, to put it in context, 65,000 cars a day is right on par with parts of I-270 in the south part of Columbus. It's 20,000 cars more a day than State Route 104, which is a freeway-like facility, sees a day. And this congestion isn't a peak hour congestion. It is an all-day congestion. So, we have, we've just simply ran out of room out there. And this expansion, you know, not taken lightly, is much needed.
Great. And when we talk about, I know that we've mentioned this several times, but because there are folks who pay, who might be listening or might be paying attention to this particular project, can you talk a little bit about the shared use pathways? Because we've been using this as a strategy for safety for some of our most vulnerable folks, so that's pedestrians, cyclists. Can you talk a little bit about and explain what a shared use path looks like and what folks can expect, especially along a busy stretch of Broad Street?
Sure. A shared use path is typically a 10-foot asphalt stretch of, you know, stretch of pathway that both bicyclists and pedestrians can use. It's fairly wide, and it is a good riding surface for bicyclists. We are creating quite the network out there. So, along East Broad Street is going to be, this is phase one. We are going to, we have phase two of this same project underway from Outer Belt Street to Reynoldsburg, New Albany Road that is coming in 2026. It's under design again right now, and it will extend that shared use path all the way to Reynoldsburg, New Albany. I'll put a plug in for Linkus. We've got plenty of projects in that area on the draft list right now that's going to potentially extend some of those projects down Reynoldsburg, New Albany. But then the city, our department also has a project underway right now on McNaughton Road that is going to have a shared use path along McNaughton Road that will connect into Broad Street, again, allowing people to get to transit more easily and be able to use other alternative options, such as biking and walking, to get to where they need to go.
Thank you. My last question is, I know that usually, especially when, when we talk about widening, right, what does that look like on Broad Street, and how is that going to help with the efficiency and safety of traffic along that corridor?
We are adding a lane, but we're also doing intersection improvements, including adding turn lanes at many of the intersections along the stretch of roadway.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight this, first of all, because it is a pretty hefty price tag, so folks can ensure, so the folks can have an understanding of the infrastructure improvements that we're making, especially because, you know, just our last council meeting, we, this was a major concern of some meeting, we, this was a major concern of some residents as we think about the increased density that is coming along this corridor. And we know that in certain streets, especially, one time this was rural, a rural area, right? And as it continues to grow, and Columbus continues to grow, we are taking safety very seriously with Vision Zero, thinking about our complete streets plan that is coming down the pike, which helps to guide us in how we make infrastructure changes on our roadways. And so I just wanted to highlight this as yet another way that we are addressing the challenges that we have, understanding the limitations that we might have in the infrastructure that is currently in place, but using strategies to, again, ensure that our residents are safe, whether you are walking on a bike or operating a vehicle. Is there anything else you would like to add to that?
I'll just add that, you know, this is on our high injury network for Vision Zero. And again, first and foremost, this is a safety project, looking to relieve this congestion.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And as an Eastsider who definitely travels this path, I appreciate it. And folks will also start to see, because of some of these strategies, they'll, they'll feel that along that East Broad Street stretch. It's not just something that's happening in one part of the city, but you'll feel it all along that corridor. So, thank you. Do my colleagues have any additional questions, comments? Thank you. With that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, that's all for me this evening.
Thank you, council member. Next committee to come for council is the Neighborhoods and Wreckin' Parks Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dayakauer. Councilmember Flor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Dorans. We only have one item in my committee this evening, and as I read the ordinances, I invite Michael Corey to come forward. Tonight, we have ordinance 1840-2024 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with the Human Services Chamber Foundation, a nonprofit entity, in support of their capacity building for nonprofit organizations, and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. Columbus is lucky to be home to many impactful nonprofits, and these organizations are vital to securing many basic human services for thousands of Columbus residents, addressing issues such as housing, food security, youth programming, and medical care. And while we have many robust programs put on by large experienced profits, there is still a need for more programming. As Columbus grows, so will the need to ensure that no resident is left behind. Our city has many small nonprofits doing amazing work in our communities that sometimes struggle with securing funding and building capacity to bring their important work to more people. These scrappy little nonprofits often do not have access to the same resources as larger nonprofits and resources that we have available to our small businesses. So as part of our 2024 operating budget, I set aside $100,000 to start a nonprofit capacity building program in Columbus. And after months of brainstorming, we are going to contract with the Human Services Chamber to build and carry out this program. The Human Services Chamber already does amazing work supporting our community's nonprofits and putting on trainings and sharing resources, so they are the clear choice for the best organization to lead this program. And so here to talk about the program in a little more detail, we have Michael Corey, the Executive Director of the Human Services Chamber. Welcome back to council. The floor is yours.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, everyone else on council. Forgive me, I'm a recovering lawyer, and I was reading about some of the shooting against him earlier today, so I'm going to focus on the good news today. Thank you, as always, for your support of the health and human services sector and of our, our scrappy little nonprofit and our attempts to, to serve organizations of all sizes, but in this particular effort, our smaller organizations in town. The council member and us have been plotting ways to help nonprofits in lots of ways in terms of expanding their capacity and in this unique way, in helping them to seek the funds they need through grant writing efforts to bring in more resources to help more people. One of the things that we've identified for the past couple of years and are identifying again in real time is the fact that nonprofits are having a hard time meeting the needs being asked of them by the community. And one way in which they can remedy that is by having more resources in which to then staff up or source up to serve the community. So the program we're going to stand up is a way to provide unique support, concentrated support for a cohort of about two dozen nonprofits or thereabouts in their ability to seek funds and provide that technical support, that training, give them templates and other resources so they can continue to do that long after this particular support has, has come and gone. So thank you all so much for the chance to support our members and other nonprofits in this way, and happy to chat with any of you here offline about what we're trying to do. Thanks, council member.
And we're still working on coming up with a snappy little name for it, because you got to have a good name. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, council member, for your support, and thank you, Michael Corey, for all of your work. I work at a scrappy little nonprofit and appreciate the work that you do also to support nonprofits. I mean, I think that, especially for some of our grassroots organizations that are quite literally standing in the gap, like this is, this is an incredible resource for them, and coming together and building a network of all of the folks who do stand in the gap, especially at such a critical time where, you know, as our city is growing and the needs are growing of our residents, it's imperative that those folks understand how to continue to do the work that they're doing, and they're doing such good work. And making sure that they can pay their people and they can still serve our people is critical and important, so I'm really excited to see whatever the snappy name of this program is, but I'm even more excited to see all of the good that will come out of this investment in them, so.
Thank you, council member. The council member, your colleague, did reject the name Councilmember Dayakauer Capacity Building Program. So.
Wow. All right then.
It's just too long. It's just too long.
I don't, we don't get the resources now, do we, since I messed that up?
If no one else has any more questions or comments, then I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. The next committee to come for council is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Faber, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Dorans. Tonight, in the Housing, Homeless, and Building Committee, we have ordinance 1977-2024 to designate a portion of downtown area as a clean zone in order to regulate certain commercial activity on public property in connection with the 2024 MLS All-Star Game Week being held July 20th, '24 through July 24th, 2024, to designate the geographical boundaries for the clean zone in the downtown area and to declare an emergency. The 2024 MLS All-Star Game is a large sporting event hereby declared a, quote, "special event," end quote, which is expected to attract thousands of visitors to the Columbus area and is projected to have significant economic impact on the city and surrounding region. It is in the best interest of the city to regulate this special event to preserve the health, safety of all citizens, visitors, and participants, as well as preserve the aesthetic qualities of the downtown area. MLS would like to prohibit street vendors in the area adjacent to the stadium. Therefore, it is necessary to create a clean zone within specific boundaries in the downtown area and in conjunction with the special event. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, that's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, council member. The next committee to come for council is the Health, Human Services Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem. Tonight, in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances on second reading. The first is ordinance number 1599-2024 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Cara, Cara Soft Technology Corp. for Qualtrics software licenses and services to waive the bidding requirements of Columbus City Code and authorize an expenditure from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof. Columbus Public Health will use the Qualtrics software and licenses provided to, to design and improve experiences that build community engagement, trust, and satisfaction through the use of community surveys, registrations, quizzes, et cetera. The software is crucial to meeting all the deliverables for the Public Health Infrastructure Grant Program, and the contract period will run from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th of 2027. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you so much. And then, second ordinance tonight is ordinance number 1600-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Sanofi Pastor, Inc. for the purchase of the Flu Zone Influenza Virus Vaccines for the Board of Health, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code and to authorize the expenditure of $79,331.05 from the Health Special Revenue Fund. Columbus Public Health offers flu shots to residents of Columbus and Franklin County each flu season. Vaccines will be distributed at CPH's immunization clinics at 240 Parsons Avenue. To ensure the delivery of the vaccines before flu season, pre-booking through the manufacturer, Sonofi Pastor is the most reliable method of ordering, which guarantees on-time, on-time delivery and 340B program pricing. We're, we're requesting the waiver of competitive bidding in order to secure our reservation to purchase the vaccine on this schedule. CPH administers, on average, 7,000 to 8,000 doses of flu vaccine yearly. And while the Ohio Department of Health provides free vaccine for children and uninsured adults, people with health insurance coverage need to be covered by privately purchased vaccines. On average, CPH administers about 3,000 to 4,000 doses of privately purchased flu vaccines every year. Procurement of this vaccine will allow the immunization program to continue to bridge these gaps and protect Columbus and area residents through the 2024, 2025 flu season. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you so much. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, council member. The next committee to come for council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Pro Tem. Tonight, I have three ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first one's 1124-2024. To authorize the Director of Public Safety to accept a $1,600,000 comprehensive opioid-stimulant and substance use site-based program grant award from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to authorize the appropriation of $1,600,000 from the unappropriated balance of the General Government Funds Grant 2220, to authorize the expenditure of $1,600,000, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a 100, excuse me, $155,500 contract with Franklin County Family and Children. First, counsel for multi-sector family case management and trauma recovery services, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into an $87,293 service contract with Village Venture LLC, to continue program management, grant management, and data analysis, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. COSUP funding supports continued outreach services provided through the city's Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, or REACT. REACT is an innovative outreach service operated by the Division of Fire to actively address the opioid crisis negatively impacting far too many Columbus residents. Grant funds support one family case manager, one trauma specialist, family and children support specialists, and overtime costs for firefighters and paramedics and peace officers to fill in when sworn REACT staff are on vacation sick and/or attending mandatory training. Grant funds also support continued program management and grant management, data analysis, project evaluation. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1126-2024 to authorize the Public Safety Director to accept U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's overdose data-to-action program funding via subaward from the Franklin County Public Health in the amount of $280,941, to authorize the appropriation of award funds in the amount of $280,941 to the Public Safety Department for expansion of Rapid Response Emergency Addiction and Crisis Team outreach activities from the unappropriated fund of the government, General Government Grants Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $280,941, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a $60,000 service contract with Village Venture LLC, to continue program management, grant management, and data analysis, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. This subaward addresses the local opioid crisis by expanding the capacity of the REACT team and increases linkages to REACT outreach and educational services. Deputy Director Dan Giacchino, could you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding?
Yes, President Pro Tem Dorans, Chair Remy, members of council, actually in both cases for these ordinances, 1124, 1126, the reason for the waiver is merely for the contract with Village Venture, which is the, the manager of the grant and reporting, and they have been a part of these since the inception of these programs, and we'd like to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
And finally, I have 1790-2024 to authorize the Director of City Attorney to pay attorney's fees, court costs, and prejudgment interests in accordance with the opinion in order entered on June 4th, 2024, in the case of Terry Scott Caskey versus Nathan Fenton et al., United States District Court, case number 220, CB 1549, to authorize the transfer of $545,210.95 between divisions and object classes within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $545,210.95 in payment of the attorney fees, court costs, and prejudgment interests, and to declare an emergency. So I'm going to turn this over to City Solicitor Rich Conglise to give us a brief overview of this ordinance.
Thank you. This is the second time this case has been in front of counsel. Previously, we were back here in November of 2023. The case arose as a result of a traffic stop where a couple of officers stopped a 2009 Altima. They thought that the driver had stopped on Sullivan Avenue and appeared to have been picking up a sex worker. So they started, they had noticed that the, the vehicle had engaged in some minor traffic issues, not signaling, switching lanes. So they started to chase, the, they called the chase off, the vehicle ends up fleeing. They ran plates, took a look at picture, they, they thought they identified the driver. Driver was charged. The charges were ultimately dismissed when a video of the driver's roommate was made claiming that that person, in fact, was driving the car. So this case then gets filed in district court as a malicious prosecution and wrongful arrest case. We went to a jury trial, and in November, the jury awarded the plaintiff $350,000. This $545,000 to $1095 is the result of the application for attorney's fees. As council knows well, a lot of times when we come and settle cases, we talk about the expense of attorney's fees in trying a case. And so that's where this came from. The, the fees issue was briefed, the judge reviewed the fees, reviewed everything else, and decided that that was an appropriate award, based the number on approximately, when you average the lawyers out on the other side, of approximately $500 an hour for attorney time.
All right. And so I want to make sure that my colleagues have the opportunity to ask any questions about this particular case, if they have them. All right. Thank you. Appreciate the overview. In that case, I'm going to go ahead and move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dayakauer, Faber Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you so much. That's all I have tonight in Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Thank you, council member. The next committee to come for council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Weich. Councilmember Flor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I have five ordinances in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee this evening. First, I have 1134-2024 to authorize the city attorney, on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities, to modify the contract for special legal counsel services with Taft, Stinetis, and Hollister LLP for the divisions of Sewage and Drainage and Water, to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columb... competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $55,000 from the Sewage and Drainage and Water Operating Funds. This is the second modification of the contract entered into with Taft on January 20th, 2023. Because the original consultant, GeoSynTech, was unable to perform the sampling work as scoped, if unforeseen issues or difficulties are encountered that would require additional funding, another modification would be requested. The new consultant, SLR, requires additional funds to complete the work. The department believes it is in the city's best interest to waive competitive bidding because Erica Spitzig is a sought-after legal expert in the field of PFAS and their relation to water, so there's a need to move quickly. Director, just kick it to you just to speak briefly about this ordinance.
President Pro Tem Harden and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. The modification allows us to continue our PFAS sampling work, which is very important as we move forward with looking at the existence of PFAS in our water supply. Last year, we legislated an additional $130,000 for sampling under the PFAS council contract with Taft-Stetanus-Hollister LLP, and they were unable to perform that work. GeoSynTech was their subconsultant, and they came back and said they were unable to perform the work as it was scoped. So we are working with Taft to bring on SLR to complete that work. The original sampling work was estimated to cost $130,000. The new sampling scope under SLR will be $172,735. And there is additional budget in case, you know, there's any other hiccups as we go along. But it's important to keep moving forward on this. So that's all.
Thank you, Director. Any questions, comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Perfect. Next, I have 1555-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for professional construction management services for the fourth water plant project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to appropriate funds in the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, to authorize the expenditure of $45 million from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund to pay for the project. This project will provide professional construction management services for the Division of Water's fourth water plant project. The PCM services will include construction administration, construction inspection, program management, constructibility reviews, construction sequencing and scheduling, construction cost estimating, and other services needed to assist the Division of Water with the management, coordination, and oversight of this project. PCM services for the transmission main portion of the fourth water plant project will be provided under a separate contract. Let me stop there and see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 1815-2024 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Plastic Reduction Project, doing business as Central Ohio Reuse Coalition, in support of their coffee shop reuse project, and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. Every day in Columbus, over 500,000 single-use coffee cups are thrown away, and that is a conservative estimate. Reducing this waste requires creative circular economic systems and solutions. The Central Ohio Reuse Coalition is proposing to launch an open-loop reuse coffee shop pilot project with the goal of reducing disposable coffee cup waste in our communities. This system would work similar to a library. Customers borrow reusable cups when they order coffee and are responsible for returning the reusable cups to the coffee shop or taking it to another shop within the system. While they are still looking for coffee shop partners, they have identified a few on the south side of town where they hope to kick off the pilot. I'm grateful to the Central Ohio Reuse Coalition for thinking creatively and bringing the idea to this council. The data collected during this pilot will help drive future programming in the space. So we had a chance to kind of hear from the Central Ohio Reuse Coalition during our committee hearing last week and talking through what this project might look like. Ultimately, it's about providing breadcrumbs for changing of behavior. We have known for a long time the effects of climate change and what we, as a city and community and a country, need to do. It is almost frustrating sometimes, the lack of progress in doing the right thing and moving to a more sustainable economic system, but here we are. So we will provide those breadcrumbs to get people to change their behavior. I would hope everyone takes an interest and takes the opportunity to participate in this pilot on the south side. The more data we have, the better this program can be in the hopes of expanding this to other parts of Columbus. So let me stop there and see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 1891-2024 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreements with Gateway Film Foundation, doing business as Gateway Film Center, Franklin County Historical Society, doing business as COSI Columbus, and Community Development for All People for their services as cooling centers during the week of June 17th, 2024, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure in the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. This $71,000 is being used to reimburse the costs related to serving our community during the heat dome we experienced the week of June 17th. COSI, the Gateway Theater, and Community Development for All People opened their doors, expanded their hours of operations, and respectively to meet the needs of our community. Because of these entities, almost 4,000 individuals were able to beat the heat. After witnessing how quickly this response came together, I have hope that with strong partnerships like these, Columbus will have no problem adjusting our priorities and procedures to meet the demands created by climate change. Thank you to everyone who was a part of this response, but especially our nonprofit partners that do so much with so little. I also want to applaud Wreckin Parks for the work that they did and Open Up Cooling Centers. Obviously, those pools were inundated with people, so kudos to the entire team there because it was a lot in a short period of time, but we were able to adapt and protect residents, keep people alive. So let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Dea O'Kower.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Epstein.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
Mr. Weich.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Dorans.
Yes, ordinance passed.
Thank you. And last in this committee is 1954-2024 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with the Garden Club Project in support of their urban farming programming and expansion, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. This funding is a continuation of support provided by my colleague, Councilmember Remy, last year for this project, so I'll kick it to him for a few words.
Thank you so much, Chair Weich. I'm excited to co-sponsor this legislation in support of the Garden Project, the Garden Club Project. The Garden Club Project is an urban farm that empowers individuals and communities to cultivate their own food while fostering safer and stronger neighborhoods. Through hands-on education, outreach, and community engagement, the project seeks to promote sustainable urban agriculture practices and enhance food security. Their target population are community members with limited access to fresh produce. They serve community organizations and local schools seeking to integrate gardening into their programming. But due to unexpected flooding and bad weather last year, this funding has to be re-appropriated this evening, so we're excited to do that and look forward to a very productive, growing season. So thank you so much, Chair, for the opportunity.
No worries. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my other colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have in public utilities tonight. However, I do have an ordinance and rules and policy. Would it be okay for me to?
You may.
Finally, I have 1730-2024. This ordinance mines Title 11, chapters 1145, Sewer Use Regulations, and 1147 Sewer Charges of the Columbus City Codes to allow for the use of mass-based local limits and to provide additional methods to determine the organic strength of wastewater. Local limits are limits placed on discharges of pollutants from industrial users to the sanitary sewer to protect Columbus Water Reclamation Facilities and Sewer Collection Systems that protects receiving streams and waterways. The department is making these changes based on the Ohio EPA's issuance of new local limits, and due to the growing industrial base and population growth, our water reclamation facilities are approaching low capacity. Divisions of Sewage and Drainage propose this new mass-based limits as opposed to uniform concentration-based limits in order to protect our waterways, provide flexibility for industrial users, and for the Division of Sewage and Drainage's industrial pretreatment program to be compliant with EPA regulations. Based on our review of the last five years of industrial use data, the industrial users are not expected to experience issues meeting these new local limits. It's also important to note that this code change does not create any new charges for customers. But let me pause there and kick it to the director just for a few comments on this code change.
Thank you. President Pro Tem Dorans, Chair Weich, members of council, Ohio EPA has approved our local limits with our technical justification and proposed changes to the city code chapters 1145 and 1147. Timely approval of these items are essential as we are required to enforce these local limits by July 15th, 2024, per the Ohio EPA. We have met with, we've had a series of three meetings with all of our industrial users over the last weeks, informing these, informing them of these limit changes, and have done all the due diligence to support that work. So we're ready to go.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. And it's always nice when we can kind of meet with folks ahead of time to share changes that are coming and to get their thoughts and feedback. Let me stop there, see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Seeing no further business come for counsel, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Dea O'Kower, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
We're going to meeting number 37 and adjourn. We will move into non-agenda speakers. We will move into non-agenda speakers.[130.03]
So, here we go.
Next we have ordinance number 1794-2024 to granted variance of provisions of section 3332.037, R2F residential district 3312.49, required parking 3321.05, B2 vision clearance 3332.05, A4 area district lot with requirements in 3332.14, R2F area district requirements in 3332.27, rear yard, Columbus City codes for the property located at 285 East Markinson Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. Site consists of a single-unit dwelling and a council variance is required because the current district does not permit two-unit dwellings on one lot, while the applicant proposes to construct a rear dwelling unit above a detached garage, better known as a carriage house. The proposal has city approval from city staff and Columbus South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1795-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.03, R1 residential district, the Columbus City codes for property located at 1241 Manor Drive to allow two-unit dwelling in the R1 residential district. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the requested council variance will allow construction of a two-unit dwelling. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Far East Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1797-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.039, SR suburban residential district and 3312.49, required parking, the Columbus City codes for property located at 6779 Braviera Drive to allow type A family childcare home with reduced parking standards in the SR suburban residential district. Site consists of a single-unit dwelling with a type B family childcare use and the requested council variance proposes a type A family childcare home in a dwelling, which is not allowed in the current district. Since the primary use of the property will remain a single-unit dwelling, staff has no objections to the request of use and which must comply with the higher revised code requirements and be inspected by the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services. The proposal has approval from city staff and the Greater Southeast Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1823-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.037, R2 residential district 3325.801, maximum lot covered, 3332.05, A4 area district lot with requirements, 3332.14, R2 area district requirements and 3332.19 fronting and 3332.27 rear yard, the Columbus City codes for the property located at 103 West Tompkins Street to allow two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. Site consists with a single-unit dwelling and the requested council variance will allow the construction of a single-unit dwelling above detached garage, again, better known as carriage house. Council variance is required because the current district only allows one single or two-unit dwelling per lot, but does not allow a two-single-unit dwelling on one lot. Proposal has approval from city staff and the University Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
And finally, I'm sorry, adopted. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1824-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district 3332.05, A4 area district lot with requirements, 3332.18D basis computing area and 3332.26 minimum side yard, the Columbus City codes for property located at 37-39 Lada Avenue to allow a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a four-unit dwelling and the requested council variance will allow the existing building to be expanded into a two-unit dwelling with a new four-car detached garage. Council variance is required because the current district only allows single-unit dwellings. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. I first move to accept this staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1825-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district 3312.49, required parking, 3321.05, B12 vision clearance, 3332.18D basis computing area, 3332.21 building lines and 3332.25 maximum side yard required, 3332.26F minimum side yard permitted and 3332.27 rear yard, the Columbus City codes for property located at 1293 East Rich Street to allow multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district and a repeal ordinance number 2998-2022 passed November 21, 2022. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the requested council variance will allow two multi-unit residential buildings totaling nine dwelling units. A variance is requested because the current zoning district only allows single-unit dwellings. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance number 1826-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.033, R2 residential district 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.27 parking setback line, 3312.29 parking space and 3312.49 required parking, the Columbus City codes for property located at 3851 Highland Bluff Drive to allow a type A childcare facility with reduced parking standards in the R2 residential district. Site consists of a single-unit dwelling and the requested council variance will allow the existing dwelling to be utilized as a type A childcare home. The council variance required by the current district only allows type B childcare facilities within a home, allows a maximum of six children, while type A facilities allow a maximum of 12 children and licensed by the state of Ohio. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Far South Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. And finally, I move to adopt the staff findings as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barrosa de Padilla de Alcara, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you. Next, we have, or I'm sorry, passed. Next, we have ordinance 1827-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3356.03 C4 permitted uses, 3325.323 building heights standards and 3325.381 parking and circulation of Columbus City codes for property located at 1479 North High Street to allow apartment building with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. Site consists of four parcels developed with commercial uses and the requested council variance will allow redevelopment of the site with apartment building containing 183 units and a total of 450 total bedrooms. A council variance is necessary to allow residential and accessory residential uses on the ground floor of the building. The requested